What's happening, all you dudes and dudettes? This is dudes talking freedom back at you once again. This is Luke.
And I'm Jeremy.
And we want to thank you for joining us on the dudes talking freedom podcast. We're brought to you by warriors for freedom, a nonprofit that creates pathways to engage service members to help veterans and their families, prevent suicide, foster camaraderie and help them live their best lives. Check them out at warriors for freedom.org. All right, folks, we're talking freedom and then whatever we want to talk about. We have a special guest Prosper school board candidate place two, Amy Boots.
Hi guys. Thanks for having me tonight. It's awesome to be here.
Thank you for joining us. We are super excited to have you with us. We had Garrett on a year ago, about a year ago. Last May, running for school board here in Prosper, Texas. And, uh, and now we have Amy Boots. Amy Boots is running for place two.
Place two. It has been announced.
Has been announced and.
Pop your colors.
Yeah. And so we, you know, we want to, anyone who's interested in running for school board, we're interested in talking to it because uh, we have children and uh, all most of our friends and neighbors also have children and care about the issues in the schools and the concerns that a lot of parents have, a lot of people in the community have about things like curriculum and you know, um, what's, what's going on in the schools, what's going on outside the schools, behaviors and such. But um, you know, we want to have an open dialogue with uh, any of the candidates, quite frankly, um, to better understand what makes them tick, why them, you know, the usual kind of interview questions you would get if you were running for uh, school board trustee position. So.
It's a job interview.
It is.
Absolutely. Every day like uh, you're going to be knocking on doors, right? Doing job interviews door by door.
Door by door. It's going to be a wild five months. I'm here just getting out in the community. We're going to make sure we knock. I think about five to six thousand doors and um, I'll have a team helping, of course, um, do as much as I can by myself, but we're going to be really getting out there rain or shine.
Rain or shine. So you, so you're forecasting that you'll beat Garrett's door knocking by 50%. Potentially. Wow. Twenty-five to 50%. That's a big, it's a big jump.
And then doing all the forums and uh, you know, the places that will be in, involved in bringing the school board, um, candidates together to discuss the issues and um, meet, meet the community. We'll be doing all that as well.
Yeah. How many total doors are here in Prosper? So are you thinking like that's a half of the doors or maybe a third of the doors?
I'm thinking it's gotta be like a quarter. There's gotta be 16,000 residencies in here. No, maybe.
I'm gonna find that number.
Yeah, I'm curious. I would be curious to know.
It's a big number and it's only going to go bigger. Did you see that uh, Universal Studios is putting in a uh, facility like a hundred acres?
Good old Hollywood coming to Texas.
Yeah. Yeah, that's.
Really close to the PGA area.
Yeah, right there. Yeah. PGA headquarters of America, right?
That shouldn't screw with traffic at all.
It should just make uh, all our jobs more challenging, a little bit incrementally more challenging. And everything. So I don't know. Yeah. But hey, let's increase the, increase the uh, difficulty, you know? That's, that's what's going to make us better.
Yeah. The universal is for kids. I saw that it's like.
It's a kid themed park. Yeah. Which raises a lot of questions for me coming from Hollywood, but that's another topic for another podcast. So tell us why you're running for school board here in Prosper.
I would love to. So I am the PTO fundraising co-chair for our elementary. I am so excited to be just serving my daughter's school and through serving on the PTO this year, you know, I've been really involved. I've gotten to dress up like a space themed astronaut for raise craze, our fundraisers. I think most of the elementaries do raise craze where you do acts of kindness in the community and turn for donations and our students raised over $37,000 for our school.
Wow.
So it's my privilege to be of the fundraising co-chair for the events like that. And I'm just fired up. I just love to serve. I've been serving kids for 20 years. So it's just a really humbling way for me to continue to do what I've always done. I have a history with public service and corporate philanthropy and nonprofit work. So this is just kind of a next step for me. And given that my daughter became of age to go to school, I mean, we moved here to Prosper ISD last year. So she could go to Prosper ISD. We came from Little Elm. Um, so she did kindergarten and then now she's in first grade. So just given all my background and experience, uh, I just have felt at this time, I've seen our community, you know, reach out. Parents want representation. I am one of those parents that would love to stand up and be a voice for those who are asking for a voice. And I see that our students need a voice and I love them so much that I just really want to step out in this way. And I know it's going to be a lot of hard work, but I'm ready. I think my time serving our Senate, my Senator at the Capitol for my um, internship for my college during the 82nd legislative session really prepared me to understand, you know, the ins and outs of policy and working on um, topics like health and human services and finance and the budget reports. And I also worked on the criminal justice committees and just, and just being a part of that life for six months. Just walking around the Capitol, just walking a bill, you know, from our office to the Secretary of State, just, just being a part of that really showed me a side of our political and governmental involvement that was really awesome. Now I didn't move forward with that afterwards. I went straight into nonprofit work with you, with United Way of Metropolitan Dallas after I graduated. Because I really always did want to just serve. So I've been on this path of, you know, transitioning from kind of one to the other. From missions work when I was in my twenties in Uganda and Kenya and Nicaragua and Mexico. And then getting my degree and doing the political service and then coming into the nonprofit sphere. And then I went over into corporate philanthropy. So I've done all of it. And so, you know, it really was a dream that birthed in my heart a couple of years ago. It's just a calling. There's, there's not a rhyme or reason for it. Um, I don't think anybody wants to step into the political, you know.
Fire.
Fire. You know, it's, it's definitely not something that um, you know, that I, I was really passionate about taking a lot of heat or bullets for, for the things that have already, you know, come around, but um, I'm strong for the kids. And I'm strong for our teachers and I'm strong for my community. And that's the kind of school board trustee I would be if, if I got voted and elected on May 6th.
I love it. You know, I loved doing a sales competitions and my daughters uh, in the Girl Scouts. And she's out there trying to sell more cookies, right?
Oh yes, cookies. Mmm, Girl Scout cookies.
Where are they? How come we don't have any?
So the raise craze thing is fantastic because I mean, it teaches these kids to go out there and achieve something and it shows them that they can accomplish a goal and it makes, gives them the type of confidence uh, to go out and do even bigger and greater things, you know, and experiences. Which you touched on as well, which clearly you're very experienced. You've been all over the world doing mission trips and all kinds of stuff, uh, at 82nd, uh, you know.
Legislative session?
Eighty, 82nd legislative session.
I know. It's tongue twister.
I've completely. The word legislative itself is a bit of a tongue twister.
It's so hard. But those experiences, I mean, I think back to my education. And I feel like I learned more from going out and having experiences or going on a field trip. Those are the things that resonated with me, you know, those are the important things that leave lasting marks and give you uh, a better understanding of who you are and who you want to be and how, how you're going to become a, you know, a citizen, right? A voting citizen.
Yeah. And I'm so glad I did that internship during college. I mean, when you're in college for any college age or graduating seniors out there in Prosper ISD. When you get into college, you got to learn to get those internships. They will give you the experience that you need when you get out of college and they are so valuable. So glad I did it.
I did an internship when I was in college and it was for the corporate office of a supermarket company up in Massachusetts. And I taught myself how to code in Visual Basic.
Wow.
Over the summer, which is crazy because it's like really hard to do.
Is that why the dudes talking freedom podcast website looks so freaking awesome?
No, it's sadly, no, but it's, that's, I did do the website. If you haven't checked out our new website, www.dudes talking freedom.com. We uh, it's, it's a, it's a lot more drag and drop now, better, better GUI interface than the old school Visual Basic coding stuff. That stuff was very, very difficult to do. But it was a real basic program that I wrote for like tracking spend and you know, for phone systems and newly constructed supermarkets. I mean, this is going on almost 30 years ago now.
Wow.
So all, you were telling us an incredible story uh, right before we got started about uh, over in Africa, right?
My missions trips?
Yeah, some of your mission trips.
Was it the, the bus breaking?
Yeah, yeah. The bus breaking. Could you just kind of recount that? That was, that was an extraordinary story.
Yeah. So um, cause I brought a picture to share. It's like my first time. I was 22 years old when I went over to Uganda for the first time and I was there for about a month. And it was amazing, but the, the bus trip was Kenya. So a couple of years after um, going to Uganda for the first time, I felt called to go back to Kenya. So my uh, team went, there was about 15 of us. And we flew into Nairobi, but we were going to heroes of the nation orphanage in Nyaharuru, which was about 10 hours um, away. So we get on the, you know, big travel buses and like a van, like a van bus.
Okay.
And you know, we're going and it's some, some of it's through the bush. We go through the great rift valley. I mean, it's like, there's nobody there to help if anything happens. So.
Next gas station, 500 miles?
Literally.
Or 1,200 kilometers, I guess there.
So far.
Three countries away.
So we had a tire blow.
No way.
And we were just all sitting there like not capable of doing anything and.
Call AAA? No spare?
Trip, AAA. We're like, can you fly here and help us? So out of um, out of the bush, and I mean, I'm, I'm learning, talking in respectful manners, like out of the bush, out of the, you know, scenery come a bunch of locals in their bright red tribal outfits and it's the Masai Mara tribe and they come and they rescue us basically. They help the van get set back up and the spare gets on and they send us on our way. But we were just like, just rescued by them.
That's awesome.
And then we, we drove another five hours and on to the heroes of the nation orphanage. And um, that's a really special orphanage. They're very active still today. Um, and when we went there, we were going to help teach in their schools and, and be with the kids and minister to them. And the requirement for the children to be accepted to heroes of the nation is that both of their parents have died from AIDS.
Yeah.
So it was really, really um.
How many kids were there?
At the time, I think they were about 80. I mean, I'm not sure back and forth, you know, what, what the population has been. This was back in 2007. But they're, they're thriving. I mean, they were the happiest children. I mean, they're, you know, so um, recovered and overcome and they get ministered to um, by their wonderful teachers, the wonderful leaders of the orphanage there. They just pour their entire lives into those kids. We were there for a week, you know, to be able to, to bring and give what we could, you know, and, and we just saw a snippet, but it blessed me. You know, really, I felt more than, than we were able to bless them. And that's what I've experienced a lot with missions trips overseas is that I leave changed and I leave um, knowing that there are things that I need to be so thankful for, but like again, I've said, like, they were so joyful. They were so happy. It was so awesome to see God's work in them and to just be a part of it.
Yeah. That's the theme uh, that just keeps on coming up, you know, that people, um, people that teach, people that give, you know, they, they do it for themselves. You know, because it's so rewarding. And I think that's what uh, drives people to continue to give. Once they've given is they just love chasing that dragon, you know, because it feels so good.
It's awesome. It's, and it's so rewarding and it is a calling. You know, if you're, if you're called to be a teacher, you know, thank you so much. For all of our Prosper ISD teachers, we love you. I mean, you're, you're not compensated enough for what you do. Um, and we, we know that you work so hard for our kids every day. Yeah.
So uh, do you think they should get paid more?
I do. I actually do. I think our teachers should be fully funded. Um, I have four teachers in my family. So uh, I think I was mentioning to you guys, I'm from San Diego, but I've been here since 2008. Um, so I grew up like traveling back and forth, the two days in the Astro van, you know, for Christmas. Cause I got the aunts, the uncles, the cousins, everybody in DFW, right? So when I left California, DFW was the landing spot in 2008. But yeah, so of my family here, I have four that are teachers. Um, one was a Baylor professor, my aunt. She just retired. Congratulations to her. Yeah, but we.
Huge achievement.
Yeah. We, you know, always had seen them, you know, reaching into their own pocketbook, you know, my family members to decorate their classrooms and do things like that. And you know, even years ago, I kind of had a eyebrow up like, why is that happening? Why are you? I mean, I've never gotten a job and then had to go decorate my office. So forgive me if I, you know, but it's just, I think it's a question that a lot of us have. And I don't know the ins and outs of specifically what the salaries do or don't cover for that, if they provide you stipends, but I know that my family members paid out of their own pocket to like decorate their classrooms.
Yeah, I heard.
So I would like to see that changed.
I've heard of that too. When we were in New Jersey, I remember hearing about that quite a bit where teachers would kind of like, you know, they'd go in before school started and they decorate the, you know, classrooms and it was, was all coming out of their own pocket and and I couldn't understand that. Like, how does the school not prevent, like, has that always been the case? Like I was, and then I started thinking like when I was in first grade, second grade, were my teachers like spending money out of their own pocket? If they were, and if you're listening, thank you, but it's, it shouldn't be that way. Like there, there should be, the school should be putting up the materials and putting up the, you know.
I think so. I think they should be provided with, with the finances for the supplies that they need.
Yeah. So like my mom was a school teacher. Um, she, she put up her own money to do it. And she also went out and advocated different local businesses for uh, donations.
That's awesome.
And um, uh, she was, she was always surprised at uh, how much, how generous a lot of the businesses were. Even, you know, like the big box stores were very generous, you know? I mean, they all wanted to give. And, and she wasn't really asking for much. She's like pretty much, you know, trash. Can I have your trash? We can make some art out of it or something, you know? I mean, like.
Yeah. Recyclables or things like that. You can just kind of repurpose.
Yeah. Upcycle, whatever you want to call it. Reduce, reuse, recycle, right? That's the best way to do that. So yeah, it's a problem. You know, they're already getting paid next to nothing. Uh, we could never pay them enough. You know, uh, but you know, they should be paid uh, something more competitive.
Yeah. And especially our Prosper ISD teachers with inflation. I think they can, you know, you know, be expecting that we would adjust for that for them. So I would love to see something like that in the future.
It's a competitive ISD too, you know? I mean, we want to become, we want to be the best, you know? Everybody wants to be the best, but you know, I mean, if we want to be the best.
You gotta pay the best.
Exactly. That's right. Exactly.
That's right. It's like that in any industry, uh, whether you're selling software or you know, promoting advertisements. It's, you know, the, the companies that pay the most generally will
Attraction and retention.
And retain the best talent.
Right.
That brings me to my next point too. Can I announce that right now?
Yeah, go for it.
I would love to um, propose a substitute incentive program for our schools as well.
Awesome.
As a candidate, I'll be talking about that during my um, campaign. I think that uh, we have a sub shortest issue and um, oftentimes I know at least at my daughter's school, I've seen and I've, I've heard this is going around everywhere. But you know, teachers are absent. We're, we're, everybody has, you know, the COVID restrictions still, the sickness is happening. Man, we had flu, strep, we had all the things this season. So teachers are going to have to be absent and we don't have enough subs to cover them. So what's happening is, you know, the classroom will get split, like say there's 21, 22 kiddos. Then they get maybe like five here, five there, five there, but you know, split into the other teacher's classroom. So where are they um, having maybe upwards of 30 kids in a class for the day because we didn't have a sub, you know, to cover them. So I would love to see us increase the sub salary for the, for the daily amount and really attract and retain some, some subs. So we can get our teachers covered and our children can benefit fully from that as well.
Yeah. Dipping into the pockets a little bit just to um, provide more funding for substitutes for their salary or their, you know, their pay compensation. It would be huge. It would increase the pool of substitutes for the different schools. That is a given. But yeah, it's critical. I mean, I've heard the stories of, you know, I think it actually happened to my son once in school where he had combined classes because a teacher was out and they needed to combine the classes that can get a substitute in. And, and let's also be honest, like substitutes don't get treated all that well by the students, right? Like they go in and the students are like, oh, they're just here for a day and they try to like take advantage and you know.
Maybe when they're older, but.
When they're older. I have, I have a kid and two kids in junior high, so.
Absolutely. But we have some subs at our elementary that are beloved.
Yeah.
And we, you know, they're like, but they're few and far between. You know, there's not enough of them. We need to multiply. Like, can we clone you?
Right. Well, that's the problem, right? Like if you're not paying enough, people are like, hey, it's not good enough.
I've absolutely seen that on, you know, even on our um, you know, neighborhood Facebook page that people are like, I would love to sub, but I can't get paid that little. And so that's a, that's a bummer for us to be missing out on a quality substitute.
Yeah. A hundred percent. I feel like maybe they did give them like a, a raise recently, substitute teachers. I feel like maybe they did go from a hundred dollars a day to like a hundred and $20 a day or something. I don't, I don't know.
I would like to see, I would like to see it go higher for sure.
Both of those numbers are definitely low.
Well, if you don't have enough, it's, you know, it's the law of supply and demand, right? If you don't have enough, then you need to pay more for, for attracting that talent. And if you're not paying competitively or you're not paying enough for people to make it worth their while. And they're just, they're not going to be interested. Fact.
Yeah. And drop everything to work one day, you know?
Yeah.
Like I'm on call.
You have to be flexible.
Like a surgeon to come in and do one day of teaching to get paid, you know.
One.
Gas.
One thousandth of what a surgeon makes.
Yeah. Which, you know, I don't know. I was reading this statistic lately since we brought that up. 50 years ago, the pay gap between the average employee and the CEO was 350 times less than it is what it is today.
Disgusting.
350 times uh, more CEOs are paid than their average worker at their company.
Yeah.
It's incredible.
Yeah, you know, and you can't say it's inflation and like they need to earn more because not everyone else is earning more. So.
Yeah. And the leadership at school, at the school board structure, you know, I mean, it, obviously not the school board. School board doesn't get paid anything.
Correct.
But uh, the, the top leadership, you know, I mean, the superintendent and uh, you know, different folks up there, the administration are being paid really, really competitive salaries in relation to uh, the teachers. And it's obviously not 350 times more. But it is multiples more, you know?
It is.
Very many multiples.
Yep.
It is. So those, so a couple of priorities you just uh, outlined. Any other things that are top of mind for you?
So safety, of course. And I think all of us can understand why that would be an issue at all times. But especially given the um, last semester that we've had and our precious students and the bus issues and those kind of things. Parents are crying out to understand and in, and to have transparency with knowing, you know, what it is with the um, safety issues that we need to improve. And I think everyone's willing to come to the table and talk about it, but what, but what parents are wanting in our community is to talk about it.
Yeah.
We want to come to the table and talk about it and see what needs to be done. I know there's, you know, like we have watchdogs. Watch moms, the programs where parents are willing to come and volunteer their time, um, you know, spend it on campus, you know, I, I believe there's availability at the high school for um, parents to come and volunteer as well to just be there, walk, walk around, observe, look for safety warning signs, just make sure everything is, you know, all good. Um, so I think these are good opportunities for us to be considering, you know, increasing. And, and we need to talk about it. We need to talk about what we can do to be as safe as we can. Beyond that, you know, our academic excellence is what brought us to prosper, right? We, we were told for years that this was the place to come to be is the best.
Yeah.
So um, seeing our star, while I, while I have issues with the star test, um, seeing our star math eighth grade scores being at 38% of passing is very concerning. So we need to consider what we can do um, in the area of academics and also technology. It's a big concern. I hear a lot of parents talking about it. I have concerned about it. Like my kid's on the Chromebook, you know?
Can't stand it.
In first grade. And I wonder about her eyes.
Yeah.
And their brains. I wonder about that. And, and I hear about math tests being taken in, in low level grades and lower grades in elementary, like first grade, second grade, third grade, taking a math test on a Chromebook rather than pen and paper for me.
Where you have a calculator like on the Chromebook and your teacher's probably not looking over your shoulder to see if you're using it when you're taking the tests.
Yeah. Or you know, you're not proficient on uh, the computer because your parents are well read about the dangers of technology, just like the CEOs of major uh, technology corporations like Apple and Google. I mean, these people's kids don't get all the tech. They don't get bombarded with all the tech because they know what it does to them. And you know, we're, we uh, had a gal Cassandra Maloney on uh, the podcast who was talking about Operation Underground Railroad and she's affiliated with a group called Wait Until Eighth. And they're all about waiting until eighth grade in order to get these peoples the smartphone and the smartphone and the, the computer and all that stuff. I mean, it's all kind of the same deal. But you know, it goes back to letting your creative brain fully develop before you move on to the analytical side and um, you know, looking at stuff on YouTube. Well, it can have some creative aspects to it largely uh, this, these tech toys, they're just not.
Mindless.
They're just mindless. They make people one homogenous soup of, you know, the same.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's addictive. I mean, I, I get addicted to it. I see a notification and I'm like, oh, so Luke texted me, let me, you know, see what he has to say, you know what I mean? And then it's like, I'm reading his text and I'm responding and then boom, my wife texts me and then it's like, my boss texts me and then it's my other friend texts me and then like, next thing you know, an hour's gone by and I haven't gotten anything done.
Yeah. Well, we don't, yeah, go ahead.
Same thing. Kids, kids.
Sorry about that, Jeremy.
Kids, not your fault. Kids, but the kid, you know, the kids, they don't need those distractions. They need to be out playing. Like my, my youngest is in second grade and he, first thing he asks me every day when he comes home from school, because he knows he's not allowed to use, they're, they're not allowed to use their iPads or play with the Xbox. They get an hour on Saturday and an hour on Sunday. That's it. All week long. And he'll come home every day and he'll be like, can I use my iPad for an hour? And like, no, it's a nice day. Go outside, play basketball, go outside. Go, go hang out with Nolan, Luke's, Luke's stepson. Go, go grab Nolan and throw the football around. Like it's a nice day outside. Go outside and hang out with your friends. Go ride your bike, you know? Do something productive and, and get some exercise, get some sunlight.
I saw them playing catch today. Funny story. And uh, they're, they're, they're driving it down the street, right? Like just the two of them passing, catching quarterback, wide receiver. And finally they finished and Nolan um, kicks the ball with his foot a couple of times and then finally kicks the ball again. And there's one tree in Jeremy's yard that happens to be the best receiver on the street because it continues to catch more and more balls.
There was three in there. I went, I got home from uh, dropping my son, oldest at off at archery practice and they're like, there's three balls in this tree out front. And I'm like, great, I gotta go like.
So Nolan kicks this football into the tree and gets stuck and he goes over there, takes his shoe off and throws it at the ball, but it gets stuck too. And I was just like, ah, we're trying that on camera. It's hilarious.
Shoe gone. Aw, man.
But that's like, those are fun stories. And like, what kind of fun story are you going to tell playing on your iPad for an hour? Like, oh, I got, you know, Stefan Diggs on my Madden team and he's a rank of a hundred two. It's like, so what? Who cares?
Yeah.
Like, it's not real.
That stuff doesn't matter.
Well, we have to be careful about what they get access to when they're on the technology as well, because the apps, you know, we have like come across some that are providing inappropriate material, you know, age inappropriate material.
Was it Epic or, yeah?
Yeah. So um, that's gone from the district.
Right.
So it's not for use. Um, but um, what else are they having access to? We're not, you know, we're not sure if we're not there and we're not being able to, you know, see what's going on and um, even at higher grade levels, you know, what are they doing? I've kind of heard from some parents that in the high school, I mean, they don't have books. They're just carrying.
No books. They don't have them in middle school. My, my kids.
On a computer and that's it.
My two oldest are in seventh and sixth. They carry a Chromebook. They don't have textbooks. You know, and my wife and I are always joking around about how we used to like, have to like do the paper covers and like fold the paper, you know, paper, uh, paper bag covers your book and like
I remember that.
People would sign those. Yeah.
Oh, you gotta make it put stickers on it.
Yeah. And people would like write and like do like Van logos, like Van Halen logo and all sorts of stuff. Like that's, that was fun back in the day.
New Kids on the Block?
Not me. Yeah. I was a metalhead, you know, back then. I, I wasn't into the, the boy bands, but you know, that's, that's a, it's like a thing and they carry the Chromebooks. And that's where they do all of their work. And if they don't get their work done in school, they bring it home and they knock it out real quick on the Chromebook and that's it. And I've also heard, and this is in middle school, because this is my only point of reference, but they, kids have access to YouTube. So in class, sometimes they'll just sit there and like, you know, be on YouTube all, all class and they won't get their work done. And then they'll just be like, I'll just do it at home. Like, I don't care. You know, meanwhile, my son, like, he's like, I want to get the work done. So I'm just going to go get this work done. So I don't have to do it when I get home. And when I get home, like, you know, I have more time to work out with my dad, go to archery practice, you know, do whatever. I'll shoot some hoops with my little brother. Like, so I think a lot of it has to do with. So number one, I don't think the techno, I think that there's too much technology in the schools and it should go back to more handwriting, you know, half these kids don't even know how to write. Cause they're typing all the time, you know?
Well, they stopped doing uh, cursive.
Cursive, script writing. Yeah. Like, it's like my daughter probably can't sign her name. Like maybe she can, but my youngest definitely can't. And he's in the second grade. And I learned that stuff when I was in the second grade. He has no idea what script is.
Yeah.
He's like, what are you talking about? I don't know. Um, but yeah, I think too much technology. I like that idea. It's, it's a, it's gotta go. It's, it's just, I get it. It's probably less expensive because you buy the Chromebook and they make these devices. It's like TVs now. You can go to Costco and you can get a 50 inch TV for 380 bucks. You know what I mean? Like they're, they're giving them away. three hundred and eighty bucks. You know what I mean? Like they're, they're giving them away, just like Chromebooks. They give them away to the schools because they want the kids to get addicted to the screens. So that it's a virtual world for all of them, you know?
So you think they should lock these, these laptops down? I mean, obviously like laptops and technology are a part of our world now. We're not saying like no tech, you know, let's just go back to horse and buggies and stuff, but like.
I think we should decrease it.
There's a lot.
Yeah. Especially in K through five, because I, I do, I worry about the eyes and, and the brain and they're, they're so tiny and they're developing. You know, they're just growing at all the time.
Yeah.
So I think that we really need to be careful about that. And, and the fundamentals of the writing is, is key. And I think if they're on the Chromebooks less, then that would help them out in that area. I mean, I know that the script writing, you know, might be something different that we had when we were little. Maybe they won't have that as much. But the math thing really, it really concerns me. It really concerns me to be doing math on the computer. I've really, I mean, when we did division, you know, you, you're writing all that stuff out. You're, you're making your list, you know, you're going forth. And when we were in, when I was in high school too, I mean, the professor put the, remember the old school projectors?
Oh, yeah.
He wrote in the plastic and then it was like up on the screen, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So he wrote, you know, wrote out every, all the formulas, all the things. And so you learned by watching, but it was all by handwriting, all.
Yeah.
So I think it's a very valuable part of learning math. And you know, when you write, it does something for your memory as well.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So I, I think that's important too.
It's like teaching somebody or.
Yeah.
And, you know, you look over here and Jeremy has a pencil sharpener.
I do, I'm old school.
Right here in the studio.
I track, I log, I log my lift. I used to, I, I, my son and I are now using an app for this training program that we're doing. But I used to do everything with pen and paper, everything. I'm old school that way. I still underline in my Bible with a pencil. I don't like have a digital version of it, you know, old school. All that, like I, I love reading books. I have a huge library in my office. Like I, I, I like, like hard books. Like my wife reads a lot of books, but she loves her Kindle, you know? And to me, it's just like one more screen. Like I don't, I don't want the Kindle. I don't want, I, I have one and I never use it. I always make sure I get a book. I like the feel of a book. I like to read the book. I like to flip the pages. I like to be able to make notes, write in it. And, you know, we talk about math. It's like the same thing with English. Like my, my kids don't even really understand punctuation all that well. Like my younger one doesn't really understand punctuation all that well, because my, like my daughter's a good example. She's in sixth grade and she's texting all the time, like my.
I think the spelling with the texting and the autocorrect, I think the spelling is suffering.
It is.
What do you think?
Usually, hugely. And that carries over to school because now they're using Chromebooks and they're not actually writing out a lot of their answers, right? You get it. Back then, back then, I'm like dating myself, like back in the day.
Yeah, I said New Kids on the Block, so we're back.
But like you, you'd get a question, you'd get a piece of paper, just like you were talking about in math, and you'd have to write out your answer, right? And you'd have to use a capital, you know, at the beginning of the sentence, capital letter. And then you'd have to know where apostrophes are, where your commas go, your periods go, space in between, you know? And you'd have to write an actual sentence or sentences, a paragraph, et cetera, indentation, all of those things. That is almost non-existent from what I can see now, because in, they're just doing everything typing, right? And, and they type the way that they text or the way that they communicate on their chats or whatever it is.
Practice.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, and I've also noticed, since you guys brought up the reading too, so my daughters, I've known, first grade, right? So we are in the learning of reading. You, up until third grade, you're learning to read and then afterwards you read to learn.
Right.
But she's, you know, guessing at the pictures in the books and in order to see what the words might be. Like, so, you know, if the page has a key on it and it's, you know, K E Y and she's kind of not sure about that. Cause E Y to her doesn't spell key, you know, she's probably like key E Y, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So she's looking at the key to go, oh, that's key. And I was like, baby, read that word, like cover the picture. Can you sound that out? You know, so those are concerns I have too with, with possibly some reading curriculum issues is are we doing too much like looking at a picture and not going with the basics of phonetics? And it's not going to be all kids at all. Every, all kids are going to be different. They're going to be gifted in other areas. She happens to be really good in math. She doesn't have any problem with that. But this year we've started to see areas of concern where last year she didn't have any areas of concern in any, in any subject whatsoever. And now we're kind of seeing that, but, but I'm at home noticing. You know, she's guessing at words and I thought, are you, are you doing okay? You know, how do I help you at home? And that's the parents or partners part of my campaign, which is pretty much, I need a T-shirt. That's like my slogan.
Yeah.
Parents are partners.
Parents are partners.
Parents are partners.
That's right.
Because I need to work with her teacher, with our principals, you know, and make sure that I'm doing what I can to help her if we're seeing areas of struggle for her. So we all need to communicate together. It is a team. You know what I mean? It is partnership. Parents plus teachers equals winning for the kids. That's what I believe.
Absolutely. I've, I've heard that one of the biggest correlations to children's success is if they are read to every night before they go to bed, you know? You start out reading to your children every single night. And then you read, you have them read every night. At some point, you know, you kind of like let go, you take the training wheels off and then you just let go.
All three of my kids read a book every night before they go to bed. Yeah, we did, we did that. You know, my wife Chrissy, she was adamant. We gotta read to the kids every single night. We gotta read to them. And so I would take one, she would take the other and we'd read and we'd flip back and forth. And like I would take the, my daughter and she'd take my son, we'd read. And then we had the third and then it was like we're playing zone defense. So it's kind of more of a challenge. And, but now it's like my oldest, you know, he has a book on his nightstand, so he'll like read, he loves to read. And he doesn't love the subject of English language and reading in class because he doesn't like to be told what to read. And so that's a key differentiator, right? So it's like, it, if you don't love the subject that you're reading or the topics or being told what you should be reading and then having to like remember that. And I had the same problem when I was a kid. I hated reading anything but the books I wanted to read. And they don't necessarily let you read the books you want to read for school projects or things like that, right? So I'm like, you kind of got to suck it up and just do what they're asking you to do in school. But you can read whatever you want at home, whatever topics and subjects are interested. As they've gotten older, they have gotten more into reading and, you know, they get a lot of books for Christmas or birthdays and you know, sometimes they'll buy their own at book fairs and things like that. And they'll come home and they'll just want to read. Like my, my youngest now is second grade. He'll be like, Dad, I gotta, you know, I'm from New England, so I'm a big Patriots Celtics Red Sox fan. He's like, Dad, I got another Patriots book we can start reading for bed. And I was like, awesome. He's like, I also got a Celtics one.
You didn't say wicked? I thought that's how you guys said it.
Wicked, that's wicked awesome. Yeah, no, I dropped the wicked a long time ago.
I still hang on to my dude pretty hard. I brought that.
Yeah.
I, I incorporate it with y'all though.
Yeah, yeah, I've started to incorporate y'all.
Really, yeah.
Yeah.
I do it all. One of the, uh, uh, family friend of ours, for Christmas, they actually do something you want, something you need and something to read, which I thought was a pretty cool thing for Christmas.
I like that.
Okay, so we're all fans of supporting reading.
Yeah, and Christmas.
Oh, hugely.
Christmas, okay, Christmas.
I love to read. I love to read. And I used to hate it. Like I used to listen to music and I was like, I don't want to read. But now I'm just like a sponge. I just love to gather information, read anything. Like if it's interesting to me, I'll buy. I have so many books because I'll go on Amazon and I'll buy something. I'm like, I want to read that. And I got this huge stack of books I just haven't gotten to yet. And I'm like, it just keeps getting bigger and bigger because I just keep reading and reading and reading. But I try to pass that on to my kids. And I think it, you're right. I think parents are partners and they have to, they have to be there to help. Because the teachers can't do it all. The school system can't do it all, nor should they be expected to. And at the end of the day, it's, it's really the responsibility of the parents to ensure that their kids are getting that, you know, the quality education that they deserve. And that's where I think we all come in, right? Because if we don't like the way things are headed, then we need to vote to make change. We need to explore other options. We need to make decisions about what are the right things for our children in school at this point in time. And let's go put the people who are going to help us get to that point, that, that utopic vision. And let's, let's vote those people in, right?
And it needs to be okay if we bring up issues and concerns. It has to be. It has to be okay because all students are not the same, right? So what are, was going on with our family and how our child is learning is not going to be the same as anyone else's per se. But we do see that there are similar issues, you know, going on, like the math scores is an example, you know, obviously that's across the board, thirty eight percent. So we all need to see what we can do to increase that. And then we have, you know, heard from many people about the reading issues as well. So it nee, it needs to be okay that we raise concerns. We can all talk about it.
Yeah, sadly, the world has gotten away from it being okay. As a general rule of thumb, if you speak up about things you don't like, you get beat down.
Yeah, it seems like you get painted anti, anti this, anti that.
An extremist.
Yeah, anything that's really further from the truth. It's like, I'm really pro my kid. I'm really pro everything working out. I'm really pro making sure that we all work together. That's really what it is. It's not an anti anything. It's, I'm pro for positivity. I'm pro for making sure that our children get the best education. If I raise a concern, I'm not anti anything.
Right.
I'm pro the kids.
Heck, yeah.
Yeah.
So how are you gonna promote your school board candidacy, you think?
We're gonna be, these boots are made for walking. And that's just what they'll do.
Alright.
Yeah, we're gonna do a lot of block walking. Of course, I'm going to participate in, you know, forums and any events that we can, you know, make it to, to get out there and be in front of the community, the meet and greets, anything like that we can do to kind of put our face out there. And, and I'm going to be obviously available by email. I have an email account set up and then we're on social media. So we're going to be trying to be as active as we can with just putting, putting out the views, what are the campaign platforms, you know, any, any information about, you know, how people can reach me so I can answer them and answer their questions.
Awesome. So the meet and greets, can you talk a little bit more about those? Like what are you going to be doing for those?
So that's if someone wants to host, you know, us at their house and provide, you know, a space for us to all meet together.
Okay.
We can share, I can do speaking engagements with, with, with the meet and greets.
Like neighbors and friends and things like that. So if someone wants to do that, what do they, who do they contact or what do they, what's the best way to, you know?
Yeah, they could reach out to me for sure. Absolutely.
Like on Facebook or?
Yeah, well, and, yeah, and, you know, there's an announcement that's, you know, coming out on Facebook with, well, my Facebook's up with the information. You know, if you can reach, so anybody can message me. Instagram's up as well.
And we'll put that in the show notes, all her contact details.
Yeah, absolutely. So, yeah, so we're reachable, you know, by, by whether it's like email or want to reach out and message on social media channels right away. You know, we'll be very proactive in responding as best we can. I might be flooded with a lot of questions like immediately. So we'll be getting to those as soon as we can. But, but a, a face out in the community knocking on doors is what I'm hoping for, you know, to, to reach people like that too. And if anybody wanted to, you know, meet me for coffee, absolutely welcome to that. You know, if anybody wants to talk to me about their concerns, I would love to meet everybody.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Awesome. So I've been driving around down and I see a lot of signs up, but I don't see. I mean, I, I actually have one of your signs in my yard, but I don't see your signs out in the community, on the roads, on the, on the community roads.
Right, the streets.
Yeah, on the streets.
Yeah.
I see a lot of other candidates. I mean, is that even, is that even legal?
So I can't speak for other candidates, but the Texas Ethics Commission's rules are ninety days before the election. And so my campaign will be following that. So we'll have our street signs up coming up here in just a little bit, but we're going to stick with the ninety day rule.
Fun. Well, I can't wait to see the, the boots all over town.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's gonna be awesome.
Follow these boots, you know?
So we talked a little bit about, like the math scores achievement is obviously a concern for, I, I would imagine any parent, right? They want their kids to do well in school. They want them to find success, be able to achieve, you know, their wildest dreams in, in terms of their grades and their performance and academic sports, whatever it might be. What do you think could be done to improve student achievement and ensure everyone who graduates from Prosper ISD is college ready?
That's a hard question.
It is.
I think we need to, you know, if there are students that are struggling, tutors, you know, those are things we can really reach out for. I have a lot more experience, I would say, in the elementary level at this moment, but I'm going to go ahead and be not afraid to say, you know what? I may not know the answer to that question right at this moment, but I will find out. And I want to hear what your concerns are and I want you to tell me what your concerns are so I can hear that from you. And from, from our parents who maybe are facing those issues right now, maybe they're, you know, sophomore, junior, senior parents. And they're looking at their kids, you know, with a little bit of concern with the academics. I want to hear what their concerns are and I want to learn.
Yeah.
I have a first grader, so I'm not, you know what I mean? I'm not.
Yeah, you don't have a senior in high school or junior in high school who's trying to pick schools to, you know, apply to and so forth. I'm sure there's a lot of listeners out there that do have, you know, opinions or concerns and, and things that they want to focus on or be addressed. And so I think I guess we encourage everybody to, you know, voice those with you.
Absolutely.
And, and help you better understand what those challenges might be.
I want to learn, absolutely.
Yeah, awesome.
What do you think the main issues facing the school district are here?
I think, oh, sorry about that.
It's alright. Playing a little music.
So I think kind of my campaign platform ones that we went through are really what we're focusing on that I see a lot that are the main issues. The, the academic scores, the overuse of technology, parents being partners and, you know, feeling like they're, you know, able and welcome to be involved if, if they raise concerns. Transparency, a big, a big issue right now. And our teachers, our teachers need to be fully funded and the substitutes incentive program. I think would be a great way to help our teachers as well in the gap while we're waiting, you know, for kind of this season to run through with everybody being unwell and then what just happens to our teachers when they have to be absent.
Okay, well, speaking of funding, have you received any donations or any endorsements from any organizations or are you part of a pack or?
No, no, I have received a lot of donations from parents in the community though.
Great.
It's been nice. Yes, we've been able to start fundraising already. And I did receive an endorsement from our Texas House Representative, Jared Patterson.
Whoa, awesome. That's big.
Do we have an applause button or anything?
Um, we, no, we don't. I haven't changed them. We do need one though. I could do this.
It's the best we got.
Yeah, he's, he's filed some bills this session that are really important for issues that we care about, like parental rights and protecting our children from sexually inappropriate content, which I support those very strongly. So
Agreed.
It was, it was very nice for him to provide his endorsement. That was, that was really nice.
That's huge. He's been a real advocate.
Yeah, uh, yeah, totally.
Beyond that, it's just the parents in the community.
That's the most important thing.
Families.
Yeah, the, the parents in the community are going to be the most important thing. Those of us who have kids in the school system that are, you know, that, that take a vested interest in their kids' education, quality of education. And ensuring that, you know, nothing nefarious is going on in the schools that it could be considered inappropriate. You know, depending on a, age and topic as well.
That's what boots on the ground, boots on the board means is the, yeah, I was just stir frying one night and that just came to me. It was like, it was way in the beginning.
It rolls right off the tongue though.
And I was just there and it just dropped in, kind of like just from above. And it was like boots on the ground, boots on the board. And I was like, okay, that's what I'm gonna do.
Yeah.
So it really means, you know, the community is the, we're, and I'm the boots on the ground, obviously knocking and, you know, getting the word out there. But the community being the boots on the ground so that I can go be their boots on the board. This means I'm working for y'all.
Yeah.
And I thank everybody from the bottom of my heart for the donations that have been made. It's so helpful. I mean, when you decide to run, like to answer the call to run, like we didn't plan on this, you know, specifically. So what it, what it takes to run a campaign, we couldn't do it without the support of the community. So thank you everybody so much.
Yeah. And if people want to donate, and we'll, we'll include all the information like we said in the show notes and we'll get it flashed across the video screen. Uh, with our producer, Daniel, he'll, he'll make sure that that's taken care of for us. You, you have a daughter in first grade, right? And so I have, I have a son in second. He was in first grade last year. Do you think, and you know, I know you talked a little bit about some concerns you might have about them maybe not getting the right level of education around certain topics, right? There may be like reading or too much technology. Do you think any of this has to do with a couple of years ago with COVID? Where the kids were all, they're at home, they're remote, there, the, the curriculum had to change pretty much overnight. And everyone was all of a sudden working with Chromebooks. You know, Chromebooks weren't a thing in the elementary school when we first got here.
Right. This, this is what I've heard from parents who have experienced that.
Yeah. Because that, that's, I think where the, kind of the script got flipped, the cursive got flipped.
Yeah.
But yeah, it, it, and I, and I don't know, what I guess I don't understand is why was the decision? why was the decision made to not revert, right? Why did we decide to continue? And I don't expect you to know the answer to this. I'm just kind of like waxing philosophical here, but like, why did we continue with that? When we, it, it, it was, it was, everything was working fine before, right? Like scores were up, you know, we were doing better. And, and then all of a sudden this like era of COVID rushes, you know, ushers in. And then we have Chromebooks in the hands of all of our elementary school students. And then it just becomes like teaching by screen proxy, you know, and a lot of, a lot of subjects and, and, you know, my, my, my second grader carries a Chromebook to and from school, like, you know?
Mine too. And always the first grader, they're gonna, they're gonna break them. Third grader, you know? I mean, remember when we used to knock people's books out of their hands? I mean, not me, not me, but people used to do that, right? Like.
Knock books?
Yeah. Knock books. I mean, I mean, of course I did that.
Dump books.
To my buddies, you know?
Yeah, your friends.
Yeah. But.
Not to be mean to anybody, but to your friends. Yeah. Sneak up behind, knock their books, dump their books.
But don't do that to my Chromebook.
Yeah, seriously. And that's, you know, that's like part of like childhood is like getting your books dumped, you know, like you should have like three or four books you're carrying around in your classes and get them dumped once in a while.
My mother-in-law talks about this. She's an Indian Kenyan immigrant. So she came over to US when she was 18.
Okay.
So she has, you know, the total different how she grew up and just what she sees right now with, you know, our kids here. I mean, she's obviously been in the US for a long time. But how she describes, you know, her viewpoint of seeing, you know, Savannah on the computer all the time. And we really talk about it as a family that the, the computer, we need to, you know, stay off of it and the tablet, because the kids want to do fun stuff on their tablets. You know, so you have to limit that as well because they're on it at school too. So, yeah, we, we talk about that a lot in our family.
So I did do a little research on how many doors there are in Prosper, right? So because I just had to know.
Yeah. Hey, good answer.
So here's what I got is I found a website that said that there were 7,500 homes or to, you know, doors in Prosper. But that was based on like a population of 21,000. So I extrapolated on that number and I've looked at the population of Prosper and the latest number I could get was in 2021, which was 34,000 and change. And then, you know, I'm thinking 2022 is a few thousand extra.
Yeah, 10% increase.
Population. Yeah. Yeah. So back that down, you're looking at like right around, you know, 12, 13,000 doors. So I mean, 6,000 doors was your goal, right? Like that's half. You're basically looking at half of all the doors in Prosper. So that's a big number.
It is. Yeah.
Yeah.
It is a big number. But if you got a team.
Yeah. Yeah.
Facts.
Yeah, facts. So get your facts straight.
It's good to have statistics, statistics help. Anything else you want to say?
I'm just so glad to be here. You know what I mean? Thank you guys so much for having me on. It's a pleasure to be able to tell the community about myself and, you know, why I'm really doing this. And again, I welcome anybody to contact me. I would love to get to know anybody who has a question for me, any concerns they want to bring my way too. I'm open to it.
Awesome. So if you had to maybe succinctly or sum up, maybe just your elevator pitch on like why people should vote for you for place two on the Prosper School Board?
I think it'd be the fact that my experience has led me to this point where I feel called to not only step up in this way, but to answer our community's cry to be a voice. I really do. I love our children. I've, like I said, I've loved being on the PTO as the fundraising co-chair. And I love my daughter so much. I just want to be involved with her. Not many people know this, but my mom passed away from cancer when I was 10. So, you know, there was a, a big gap in my life and in my heart, missing that mother-daughter relationship. And then when I had my daughters, you know, it, it was, it was something really special for me. Of course, having children, everybody is, it's special for them too. But there was something that was provided to me when I had her. And so I just want nothing more than for her to have the best. And I want to support her where she is and that's at school. And so I want to be a blessing to all the teachers and to everyone that she's around. Because I believe that that in turn blesses my daughter.
Yeah.
So I just want to express that, you know, that, that everybody who maybe doesn't know me would understand that I'm doing this because I love our students, our teachers and our community. And I think my experience will speak for itself. And I'll prove myself to be a strong, transparent and capable candidate for Prosper ISD School Board Place Two.
Awesome. Awesome. And she's your boat and a rising tide lifts all boats, right? So what's good for her is going to be good for every other student here in Prosper. And that's fantastic. What a genuine candidate, Amy Boots. So happy to have you on. It's been a real, real pleasure.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for coming. We really appreciate it. All right dudes and dudettes, that's a wrap for this episode of Dudes Talking Freedom. Many thanks to Prosper ISD Place Two School Board Candidate, Amy Boots for joining us. Make sure you inform yourself during your local election cycles, understand the issues, make a decision and go vote. Local action makes a national impact and it all starts at home. For DTF, this is Jeremy.
I'm Luke.
And we'll see you next time. Peace.